I now call to order the regular meeting of the Belvedere Planning Commission. Can we do a roll call?
Yes, good evening Chair Johnson, Commissioner Shinsky.
Here.
Commissioner Botros.
Here.
Commissioner Seidel.
Here.
Chair Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have three present here at City Hall and one Commissioner present on Zoom, which constitutes a quorum. And in order for a motion to pass, it will require three yes votes. So moving on to the open forum, the open forum is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the Planning Commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak during open forum?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to reports, are there any commissioners who wish to provide a report on any standing committees? Or staff?
I can give a quick update. We did receive our a letter from HCD on our revised housing element. We sort of anticipated all of those comments. We're hopeful to get a response to those comments this week and set up a meeting with HCD to go over them in hopes to resubmit fairly shortly here.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be non-controversial unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the council, staff, or public. The consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence they appear on the agenda. Would any members of the Planning Commission like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Or anyone on Zoom? None, seeing none.
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Can I please have a motion to adopt item one on the consent calendar?
I move to adopt the consent calendar.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Moving on to the public hearing, I'd like to open the hearing for Six Buckeye and ask for a staff report.
Thank you Chair Johnson and members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration, this evening is an application for design review to remove a mature strawberry tree at Six Buckeye Road. On October 15th, the property owner of Six Buckeye Road submitted a design review application to remove one strawberry tree from the front yard. The tree measures 24 inches in diameter at breast height with its lower trunk leaning towards Buckeye Road. The tree's canopy sits over Buckeye Road as well as the home's driveway and entry stairs. The owner stated that the strawberry tree drops fruit on the concrete stairs and landings, attracting coyote and creating a potential slipping hazard. Pursuant to Administrative Policy Manual, Section 15.2, the building official can authorize an emergency exemption without design review if the tree is a danger to life or property. The city's third-party arborist ArborScience evaluated the strawberry tree on October 28th and reported that the tree was in good health, has been well-maintained, and presents a low failure risk. While sympathetic to the property owner's concerns, staff did not exempt removal of the strawberry tree from design review on the grounds that it did not pose a danger to life or property, as the owner could wash and maintain the driveway and walkway to eliminate the potential slipping hazards. The property owner proposes to plant one Ray Hartman's Cienotis in place of the strawberry tree should the application be approved. Design review is required for landscaping changes when those changes affect a visually significant portion of the property. Here, the tree in question is large and its removal would affect a visually significant portion of the property. To warrant design review approval, a project must further the objectives and criteria in the Belvedere Municipal Code. And while most of the factors apply to structures, the following criteria should be applied to tree removal applications. These criteria include preserving landscaping in its natural state, minimizing the removal of trees, cut and fill and grade changes, and landscape plans that are compatible with the character of the site and with plant material native to Northern California and Marin County. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And staff suggests that the commission hear from the property owner, receive public comments, and consider the information. Two separate resolutions have been provided for your consideration, one for approval and one for denial. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from members of the commission?
Yeah, I guess I just have one general question. Would the should our evaluation of whether this tree should be removed or not, should it be should it matter where it is on the property and it should it matter whether it's a public road or a private road? Do we have is there is there anything about the location of the tree on the property that matters?
To answer the question, no. Typically, design review is required for trees on private property. Sometimes we have a whole separate process for trees in the right of way. So no, simply no.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? None, okay. So I'd like to invite the applicant to speak about the application.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Some of you may remember that we already applied to get this tree removed a couple of years ago when we were starting this remodel. It was in the way of removing debris from the property during, as we were preparing for the construction project. But I would like, that application was denied. And the reason why I'm bringing it up is because I don't want you to think that there's some sort of vengeance on my part towards the tree. It's a beautiful tree. This application is an entirely different, deals with an entirely different issue. As Sammy mentioned, the fruit that the tree drops attracts coyotes. We have a big problem in the Buckeye area, all over Belvedere, but particularly in the Buckeye area with coyotes. Coyotes hang out on our property every day and every night. We have two little kids, five and seven years old. We pick up all fruit inside our backyard, fruit that are apples. But it is simply not possible for us to pick up the strawberry tree fruit, which are extremely messy and are just very numerous. To give you a sense of what it looks like during the season, it's the equivalent of, you know, having several boxes of strawberries just tossed in your driveway and in the street, and cars just drive over them all day long. So not only do they, you know, attract coyotes, it's just very unsightly and very messy. And they definitely attract coyotes because we then see, we installed, we installed a big additional fence right next to the tree because it, you know, that's where coyotes enter. They're attracted by the fruit. And then they jump over our original fence and go into the backyard. And then we see all these fruit from the strawberry tree all over our backyard. And the strawberry tree is right at the entrance to our backyard. So that's how we arrived at the conclusion that they're very much attracted to the fruit. We installed an additional fence to prevent the coyotes from jumping into the backyard, but that hasn't prevented them from doing that. We've worked with a coyote consultant, Rebecca. I've, throughout the summer, Jane, the vice mayor, is, you know, she's on our speed dial just because we have so many issues with coyotes. And again, we have two little kids. Now, this became, this strawberry tree became, you know, it's a new issue for another reason. Before we moved out, before we had the, before we had the remodel, we didn't have the smooth concrete steps that lead all the way, you know, from Buckeye Road all the way into our backyard. We built those steps so that, you know, our kids' friends, the, you know, the little neighbors could just run directly into our backyard for playdates and stuff. And now those steps did not used to be smooth. Now they're very smooth. And all those fruit that fall from the tree create a hazard. We had a couple of people, since that report was created or submitted, application was submitted, we had a couple of people slip and fall. And that just creates a hazard. And I would like to respectfully disagree with the suggestion that we should be cleaning the driveway, or the stairs, or the street. I told you just how many fruit it produces in one single day, and it's just not feasible for us to be cleaning the street, or the stairs, or the driveway every single day. I mean, you probably understand for, you know, young parents with two little kids and full-time jobs, that's just, it's not feasible. And like I said, the fruit is very messy. And it's just very unsightly for, not just for us, but also for the entire, for the entire street. Thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of the commission? Okay, are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Or on Zoom? We have, we have one on Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, seeing none. Okay, thank you. So we'll close public comment? Oh, yes, please. Can you come up to the yeah?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is oh, this one? Good evening, is that better? Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jane Cooper. And in my role as the coyote local consultant to Belvedere, I did visit Carla's home several times. And I would just like to add that while there, it became apparent that these strawberries are really are impactful on the stairway and on the street because driving along that street, I want to remind you, as a private street, they do not have the services of street cleaning that Belvedere gives to other streets. So the street remains dirty no matter what in the public areas. And then, as Carla mentioned, cars drive over it, including mine, and then bring it back down to my house, which then I had to wash. So anyway, I also wanted to mention that it isn't simply or only coyotes. We have to remember that any fruit-bearing tree that drops fruit attracts rats, attracts raccoons, and then, thirdly, attracts the coyotes, A, to eat as a funding source, the rats and the raccoons, and then the fruit as well. So after working on this issue for nearly, I hate to say it, three years, I do have very strong feelings about trees that drop fruit. I don't think, I could be mistaken, I don't think the strawberry tree is a native tree. And it's, it's my understanding, or my preference, that any tree, and Carla and her husband are very, very careful about picking up dropped fruit in their backyard. Oops, I went over, I'm sorry. So anyway, I'm just adding on to what she said, how important it is for the whole community in this case, from my perspective, to eliminate fruit trees that drop fruit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public or on Zoom who would like to speak?
No one has their hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So we will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Don, would you like to start us?
Sure. And I guess with maybe with a question for Star State. So we obviously have some language on the books regarding trees generally. But do we have anything anywhere that relates to the relationship between the trees and wildlife, and wildlife and predators as it pertains to making design review decisions?
We do not. As a coyote issue has sort of a newer topic for the community, and we are, our tree ordinance hasn't been updated for a while. We do have some edits to those, the tree ordinance, and it is our intention when we bring a revised tree ordinance forward to address something like this, you know, both removal, for removal, and for planting trees that aren't coyote species that coyotes love, or that have fruit that coyotes love. So it's, so it's an outdated ordinance. As of right now, we don't have anything that addresses coyotes, so.
Can I ask one clarifying question? I missed what, I believe the tree is going to be replaced, is that correct, by another tree?
That is correct. Sammy, what species of tree?
Ray Hartman.
Ray Hartman, Cienotis.
And is it true that no one in the community has raised any questions about that tree going in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess for my part, I am concerned about, and it's that sort of making policy ad hoc here, based on considerations, based on, notwithstanding that this particular set of concerns for this particular applicant. I haven't even begun to thought about what might be all the unintended consequence for applicants downstream with issues as they relate to wildlife and how to make design review decisions based on that. If there is an ordinance coming, great, let's see that, and let's use that and apply that to cases like these. In the absence of that, you know, I see a beautiful, healthy tree. I, you know, Cienotis are nice as well. They're also fairly short-lived as trees go. So I don't, just to my mind, I don't think I can make the findings, which however we have the findings worded, I can't find for removing this tree tonight.
Thank you. Justin?
I can definitely understand the difficulty of dealing with something that's on your property and creating a nuisance as well as a potential danger. As it relates to the danger, it does seem like there's not really any precedent for using that within the context of design review. So I find it difficult to make the findings based on the rationale for the tree removal. It is my opinion that you in this case should have the right to remove this tree with within your property, but I don't know that I can make the findings under the current code.
Thank you. Alex?
Sorry, thank you, I had to unmute. So I look at this a little differently. I think that as a planning commission, we have the ability to make a determination here that it doesn't need to necessarily be policy-driven. I, I kind of spent a little time studying the strawberry tree on the internet. According to what I saw, it's, it's not a native plant of Marin County. And that's kind of what our code encourages. But beyond that, you know, on my particular property in the lagoon, we've recently actually seen coyotes in our backyard. Now, I'm not a parent, I'm a dog owner, but we've made a policy decision in our house not to let the dog out in the backyard unattended anymore. So I think this actually gets into sort of health and safety and usage of your property. I, I'm sympathetic, you know, to a property owner applicant here who has young children. I can understand her concern. And so, and not to mention the maintenance issues that they're having to deal with on a day-to-day basis. So I would be able to make the findings in favor of the removal of the tree.
Thank you. So I am familiar with this site. I've visited it a few times. I want to say that I actually really appreciate this application because it has shed light on the fact that we need to look really closely at our tree policy and guidelines and update them. And I know that there is a draft being worked on, and I think we have an opportunity now to make it much more cohesive and speak to the coyote issue. And on the one hand, I struggle with cutting down a healthy tree. I think it's a very slippery slope when we start allowing people to cut trees down that, that are healthy simply because they don't like them, or some other such reason. Having said that, I really do appreciate what you described, and I don't think it's fair that you have to clean the street and potentially have people tripping on your steps and have coyotes coming. So I think there's maybe uncompromised here, which is, could you plant something that is larger in size and more comparable to the 40 by 40 foot tree you have? Because what I understand you're planting is maybe like 10 feet at maturity. So could you come back with a replacement tree that's a little bit more robust that will help fill the space where the strawberry tree is? Because it really does make an impression when you drive down Buckeye. Yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely. I can go back to the arborist. And Sammy, maybe you can recommend if I go to the city arborist or our own, and yeah, we can definitely come back with a recommendation. And I can commit to doing that, to finding a tree that's, that's larger in size.
Okay, okay. So we have two, unless anyone has additional thoughts on what I've proposed, and please speak up if you do.
I think I might actually be changing my mind, both for the rationale of having a larger tree there, supplement the smaller tree that would have replaced it, and also the, the safety issue. I'm going to change my vote to a yes vote.
Okay, all right. And then just as a side, we will, one of my to-do items is to follow up on the tree policy and just make sure that we get this incorporated and make it much clearer for, for applicants, for us, when we're looking at projects like this, to make it a little bit easier. So thanks for bearing with us. And can I please have a motion on the matter?
Can I just interrupt for one second? So would the condition read something like, do you want her to, them to come back to the commission, or do you want the applicant to work with the Planning Commission Chair, as well as staff, to choose a tree that's more suitable in size to the site? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, can I get a motion?
Can I make a motion to approve the project with the condition that a more suitable tree is found to replace the existing strawberry tree in mass and size?
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did we get two more votes here? Did we get everybody?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Did, are you voting, or?
Yeah, I'm voting, but I'm not, aye.
Okay, no, that's fine. You can vote however you want. I just didn't hear you, sorry.
Nay. Nay.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So moving on. I'd like to where am I here? Open the public hearing for 81 Belvedere Avenue. And ask for a staff report.
Thank you again, Chair Johnson. For your consideration, is an application for design review, demolition, variance, and use permit to construct a new single-family dwelling at 81 Belvedere Avenue. The subject parcel is located on the western side of Belvedere Island and developed with a 3,427 square foot, two-story residence and garage. The 15,300 square foot parcel abuts single-family residences in all directions. The project proposes to demolish the existing home and construct a new 4,784 square foot residence and attached garage. The project will be made up of two structures connected by an enclosed walkway. The project proposes one structure on Belvedere Avenue, which includes an 825 square foot two-car garage and carport at street level, and a 1,165 square foot, two-story accessory dwelling unit directly below. The second structure consists of the primary living area made up of two stories and 3,484 square feet. The project proposes to locate the garage on the front property line and place the carport overhang 11 feet 6 inches from the left side yard. The primary dwelling would be set 10 feet from the front and 10 feet 8 inches from the right side property line. Additional improvements would include exterior decking and stairs, retaining walls, exterior lighting, and landscaping throughout. And within the Belvedere Avenue right-of-way, the project proposes a new driveway, trash enclosures, landscaping, and stairs. In 2018, a revocable license for these improvements were approved and recorded. Here, a rendering shows the proposed garage and carport at street level. The garage's height ranges from 10 feet 6 inches to 12 feet 6 inches tall above street level. The trash enclosure to the right of the garage will be four feet tall and constructed of steel stucco and stone veneer. The project proposes a 29-foot, 10-inch-tall garage and 28-foot, 8-inch-tall residence above the existing grade. The rear elevation includes two 9-foot-tall windows and doors on the home's first story, and three 10-foot-tall sliding doors of varying widths on the second story. The project proposes two 9-foot-tall by 15-foot, 8-inch-wide sliding doors at the ADU. The left elevation shows the proposed garage, ADU, and carport. No windows or doors are proposed on the side of the building. From the right elevation, no windows or doors are proposed on the primary dwelling as well. Colors and materials will include stucco siding in a beige color, a flat metal roof in black color, window and door trims in aluminum bronze, and posts and railings in black metal. Guardrails at the second story would be made of glass panels, while the first-story railings propose horizontal black metal wire. The project proposes an assortment of exterior lighting. These include 11 steplights mounted into the stair railings, two path lights, and nine steplights recessed into site walls around the front patio and ADU. The project proposes five LED downlights at the carport and ADU doors, and a 2-inch LED light that would be recessed within the exterior decks, carports, and walkway roofs. Here, multiple recessed lights are proposed along the second-story walkway. Here, multiple recessed lights are proposed along the second story walkway and decks. And seven recessed lights are proposed at the first story deck of the residence. The project would remove three trees, including a forty inch cypress from the front yard. Other trees proposed for removal included ten inch acacia at the front yard and a ten inch oak from the right side yard. The project would plant ten new trees, including three Japanese maple at the front yard, two crepe myrtle, one oak and two Chinese pistache at the left side yard, a New Zealand Christmas tree at the rear yard, and one tupelo along the right side of the home. These trees will be planted in twenty four to thirty six inch boxes and are listed to range in height from fifteen to twenty five feet tall. The project also proposes a rhopitusporum along the right side yard and eupine protocarpus along Belvedere Avenue, which will be maintained at four feet tall. The applicant requests a variance to exceed the twenty eight foot height limitation within the first forty feet of the street line. Circled in red and shaded, this portion of the roof measures twenty nine feet ten inches tall, which is one foot ten inches deviation from the allowable height. This portion of roof exceeds the height limitation is eighty six square feet. Granting of a variance is appropriate only if the criteria under municipal code nineteen eighty four zero one zero can be met. First, the granting of a variance will not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with other properties in the vicinity. Second, that there are special circumstances applicable to the property. And third, that granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare to the owners or others on the premises. Your staff finds that granting of the variance will not constitute a special privilege because other residences have been granted variances to exceed the height limitations on Belvedere Island. Special circumstances are applicable to the property as well. The steep terrain of the lot constitutes a special circumstance, particularly at the left side of the parcel where the slope exceeds seventy percent at the area where the proposed garage would be located. Other homes in the direct vicinity are generally sloped between forty two and forty seven percent. The property is also unusual in that it's one of the few triangular lots on Belvedere Island. The triangular shape of the lot reduces the buildable envelope from both side yards, making it more difficult to build a garage without furthering further encroaching into a setback. The applicant proposes to construct a one thousand one hundred sixty five square foot ADU and per Belvedere Municipal Code nineteen seventy nine zero eight zero. The new ADU would not comply with the one thousand square foot size limitation for attached ADUs. And so a use permit is required. The planning commission must find that the requested use will not, under any particular circumstance, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, or welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood. And so staff recommends that the findings for this use permit can be made because there's no evidence to suggest that the ADU would have any detrimental effects. Also, the additional ADU will benefit the public in providing housing that will further further the city's progress towards attaining housing goals outlined in the housing element. Staff has received four letters regarding the project. Neighbor letters are generally have been supportive with two letters expressing concern with the requested height variance and its mass and bulk and visual impacts from the proposed twenty nine foot ten inch tall garage. One letter has raised concerns about the removal of the cypress tree at the front yard. And there was a recommendation that the tree be protected if possible. On January seventh, staff visited the upslope neighbor at eighteen Eucalyptus, who expressed concerns related to the visual impacts from the garage. The picture to the left was taken by staff from the neighbor's balcony. The photograph on the right was submitted by the property owner this afternoon. Staff notes that while there are design review findings related to preservation of existing site conditions and mass and bulk, there is no design review variance or use permit findings for preservation of primary views. The project would be exempt from CQ. And one correction from staff for the commission's consideration, the proposed floor area of the new home garage and ADU totals four thousand seven hundred eighty four square feet, not four thousand six hundred seventy four square feet as listed in the staff report and resolutions. The difference is due to the square footage allowed to be removed for the ADU. Staff initially removed one thousand square feet from the project's floor area associated with the ADU. And then upon further review, eight hundred and fifty square feet is allowed to be removed for one bedroom ADUs. So with that, as detailed in the draft resolution, staff finds that the project complies with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends adopting the resolutions for all entitlements, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff from members of the commission? You turn your mic on.
Thank you for the report. I was very clear and concise. I appreciate the context and the one thing would be interesting to know a little more about if there is more context about the previous proposal, if I believe this was proposed previously and has come back to the commission. Do you have a just a couple of footnotes about the difference between the two proposals? If I'm correct about that.
Yes, if my memory serves me correctly, I think in twenty eighteen it was approved with just the garage structure and the ADU. And there were two variances for that structure to encroach into that side yard setback and the and maybe the height I need to pull it up. And the revocable license was approved then and has been recorded. And I think that the homeowners are here. Their intention was they were going to live in the ADU, build the ADU, live in it, and then do the house. And for whatever reason, they've now decided to go forward with the entirety of the project. Also, that large cypress tree at the front was part of that twenty eighteen application and was approved to be removed. And again, the homeowner and architects are here. They probably have a better recollection than I do.
Those entitlements have all expired?
Yes, they extended them a couple of times and then.
Okay, so it's a fresh application for our purposes.
Minus the revocable license.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
No, I'm gonna hold.
Alex, I haven't forgotten about you. So if you have questions, please.
Yeah, actually, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, I have a few questions. So the cypress tree looks like it's sitting exactly on the property line. And so I'm curious if the determination was made whether it's city property or their property, or if it's fifty fifty, how that is handled.
I'm just pulling up the plans here. It's my understanding that it's all on private property.
Based on the drawings, it's looks like it's sitting right on the line.
Which sheet are you looking at, Ashley?
Give me one second to find it here. So if you go to L one point zero.
I see that. I don't know if we've ever had this situation. Maybe if Ann can weigh in here. You're on mute, Ann.
Sorry about that. It's a situation that I haven't seen before. I could try looking up and see if there's anything in the code that speaks to it. But if it's at least partially on city land, then I think there's a different process for getting rid of the city tree, which arguably this would be. So I think before we issue a permit, we need to make sure we know exactly where this is located with respect to the property line.
Yeah, and it also.
Straddles.
What was that?
It straddles a property.
Yeah, yeah. And it just begs the question if the tree is preserved, just the cost of pruning and maintaining it and whose responsibility it is.
Well, typically, it's the homeowners, but we don't know if we have an ordinance that speaks to that, but there is a state law that allows that for responsible to be placed on the homeowner.
Oh, this Alex, if I could just ask, so there's that clarification, there's that whole zone between the property line and the pavement on Belvedere Avenue. Is that typically expected to be maintained by the homeowner?
Again, it depends on the local ordinance, and I'm not sure you have one that addresses this. I will take a quick look.
I don't think that we do.
Yeah. In that case, it's somewhat undetermined. I mean, do we have an easement there or is it a flat out? If we have flat out title or we just have an easement over the property? Street sidewalks, other public places.
They have a revocable license. They have a recorded revocable license that covers that part. So then it would be their responsibility.
Oh, yes, that's right. If they have our typical license, then they would have to be responsible for it. Does it mean that they have the right to remove it?
Right.
Without appropriate.
So the revocable license was approved in twenty eighteen.
Yes.
And that includes exactly what we're looking at today, which is that almost ten foot long trash enclosure facing the street.
Yes, we're just pulling it up for verification right now.
I did. I do point out to the commission section thirteen twenty four oh one five, which places the responsibility for maintenance and repair of sidewalk area on the abutting homeowner. That would include the sidewalk curb gutter and any other improvements located in the sidewalk area, including the repair and connection of any gain correction of any hazards or defects.
Would that typically apply to the entire stretch of the easement from what would be the the two corresponding lot lines, property lines?
It would be the part of the public street between the gutter line and the property line. And it doesn't really matter whether it's an easement or not.
Are you guys looking up the trash enclosure? Okay, yeah, so we can.
What you have on your screen is the executed license.
So that's what they would be allowed. They would be allowed to build in the RL.
Okay, this is just to me looks inconsistent with how we're now looking at revocable license improvements. And so is there an opportunity to ask them to move that enclosure back onto their property?
You can ask them. But nothing would require it.
Okay. Based on how I'm reading it, too, brings up another question is that you have a, you know, a ten foot long metal enclosure that sits right next to street parking. So you're going to have a really hard time opening and closing those doors to get your garbage in and out if a car is parked there. I just think would the location of that street parking then be moved or have to be moved to accommodate for this enclosure?
Yes, I would. We would talk to the city engineer and hopefully find somewhere else to relocate the parking space.
So we wouldn't lose it. We would be able to move it somewhere else.
Hopefully. Should there be a safe space?
Okay.
Sorry, this is Alex again. I hope I'm not just flying in from outer space here, but so the the trash enclosure. Can you clarify? I know some of this was approved before and obviously most of it not. The trash enclosure is part of this application?
The trash enclosure, everything in the revocable license was approved in twenty eighteen. The revocable license has been recorded. I don't know the differential between what you're looking at on your screen and the recorded revocable license and what's on the plans in front of you tonight. What would be allowed to be constructed is we would go back to the plans in twenty eighteen and look at the size of that trash enclosure. Unless.
Yeah, okay, I think you answered my question. The I think the trash enclosure is already approved.
Yes, but as I'm speaking, I suppose they could ask for design review on if it's a larger trash enclosure that they're asking for, then it would open them up to design review for that trash enclosure.
Well, yeah, perhaps the applicant can comment on whether it's the same or different, I guess.
Yes.
I would like to confirm that the size is the same as what we see here approved on the revocable license of twenty eighteen. And this is Janai Burke from Sutro Architects speaking.
Thank you. And then question about the the variance being requested for the for the garage and the carport. So do we have a calculation or sense for exactly the approximation for just the square footage of the area that requires the variance? Because it's not the entire structure. It's a small portion in the back of the structure.
It's eighty six square feet for the garage.
Okay. Okay, and you made a mention of this being comparable to projects on Belvedere Avenue. Could you just, for the benefit of the commission and everyone here, explain why this is similar to those projects?
Yeah, well, four forty one, four forty three Belvedere Avenue. The steep lot, the steep slope of the lot. It constitutes the variance because it'd be very difficult to build the garage without exceeding the height because of the slope of the land. So a lot of times when we have these steeply slope lots that have garages up on the street, the backside of it comes down the hillside and it's almost a necessity at that point. That's why.
So can I just one follow up on that? So what's the what's the building code minimum for the depth of a garage? I mean, I notice we're here at twenty. It's it's the back slice of the garage that's above that needs the variance. And it, which is to say, I see the garage is twenty two like ten inches deep. Does the need for variance go away? If the if the garage were shallower and the ADU was a little bit smaller accordingly as well? Or is it, I guess I'm trying to add, is there any value there or is the is the garage just going to go up on the existing foundation at the existing size? And that makes more sense. Maybe that's a question for the applicant.
I think the applicant, I don't know what the building code is, but twenty two feet seems it doesn't seem like, you know, a car is shorter than twenty two feet, right? How how? It's a better question for the applicant. It could, in my opinion, it could probably come in.
It could come in. Okay. I think that answers my questions for staff. Alex, do you have any additional questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, do you have any additional questions? Okay, so I'd like to invite the applicant to speak about their project.
My name is Melissa Fader, by the way. And my husband Patrick Fader is on Zoom. He unfortunately had to travel this week to teach a course in Dallas. Hey, Patrick. Our architect is Sutro Architects and Janai, who already answered one of the questions, is leading the charge. And we also have our landscape architect Troy Johnson available. And we also have our landscape architect Troy Johnson available via Zoom as well. So I just want to say welcome to the commissioners. Thank you to all of the people in our, our city's planning committee and staff and welcome to our neighbors. And essentially, it's a privilege to live in Belvedere and we've, we've loved living in this house for the last 12 years and been very grateful to Arlene and George Hack that built this house in the sixties and lived in it all their days. We are essentially rebuilding the same house that we love with some modernizations and to share a couple of our passions in our, in our building project. One of them is to support the need for ADUs, particularly in our community. So I happen to have been on the board of our ranch, our local rec department for eight years. And it was not lost upon me that so many of our team and staff that support our local community commute from quite far away. My entire family is public school teachers, have been public school teachers, my parents, grandparents, my sister. And when we moved to Marin when I was five, I was already distinctly aware of the cost and stress of housing, and that was years ago. So as you know, we, we've already had the prior plans, the, the garage, the ADO, the driveway, the tree. That was already approved in 2018, and that's the identical footprint that we're bringing back. Since then, we decided to work on the rest of the house. If I'm honest, the house decided for us in some of the more recent storms, but we decided to do the project together. And that also gave us the opportunity to add a JDU to the main house. So that is something that we're, we're proud of, to be able to add and add those compartmentalized spaces. A couple of the things that you'll see that we're passionate about is sustainable water capture. So you'll see an approach in our backyard where we are redirecting some underground water that is actually swamping two or three of our oaks in our backyard. One's already died, two are dead and dying. We're going to recapture that water and we're going to distribute it more gently across the backyard. And we're also going to capture rainwater, which is some of the thought process in our roof design. So you'll see some sustainable water capture and we also feel like we get to join the ranks of sustainable building materials and more energy efficient building materials, solar panels, et cetera. I'm just frankly excited about double pane windows. But, you know, and another area of passion actually is one of the other great things about living in Belvedere is our trees. So while I do realize that we are asking for revisiting the removal of that, that old Cypress tree. It was approved eight years ago. We went back to our tree doctor Bartlett six months ago. And we brought the same question to them, like, what do we do? Do we have to remove this tree? And so they looked at it again, and it has only gotten more dry. It is not thriving. It's also competing with the foliage of our oak. And so they did not think it would thrive or survive through a construction process or much thereafter and did not know when it was going to fall. As evidenced by its dropped major branches in some of our last storms. And our town has come out with chainsaws in the middle of the night to clear the road. So they proactively encouraged us to go ahead and remove the tree, but then replant it with another fellow oak. So again, that's another theme that you'll see everywhere where we're removing foliage, we are adding that back and then some. We think tree coverage is actually one of the benefits of being in Belvedere and we think our neighbors agree. And we also appreciate all of our neighbors that have reached out and opened up discussion. We are here to discuss. And so with that, I'm going to pass the discussion on to our architect, Janai, and she'll click through a little bit more of the detail.
Sorry, I had some, some problem with the mute. Thank you so much, Melissa. Good evening. My name is Janai Burke with Sutro Architects. We want to thank staff for their thorough, thorough report and findings. Melissa and Patrick have been proactive in the neighborhood outreach efforts. We also want to thank the neighbors that have supported the project and also mentioned that we have taken all the comments and requests into consideration. In the coming slides, I'm going to talk through some of the principles behind our design. One. Excuse me. One important aspect, I'm sorry, having, this is the reason why I'm not in person today. I have a throat condition. One important aspect was the positioning of, excuse me, I'm going to drink water here for a second. Of the two buildings. We kept the location as close to the existing as much as possible. By nestling into the hillside, we are able to minimize bulk and mass. So this rendering here shows the main residence and how it is not visible from Belvedere Avenue. It shows how, it shows how the, the carport is proportional to its surroundings. And as you can see, there's just a little bit of that chimney that kind of pops through the existing oaks there in the center. This, this show, this slide shows the same perspective as a previous one. With the existing conditions, the red areas are highly highlighting the trees to be removed. You can see on the far left, we have the acacia to be removed and on this larger center area, we have the Cypress, which Melissa had touched upon previously. We felt it was important to keep a perspective viewpoint that was shown in the 2018 approval of the carport garage and ADU building, as Melissa had mentioned. We, we have done some preliminary structural studies to ensure as much openness towards the view with a cantilevered roof rather than add vertical supports. The selection of warm contemporary materials was very important to the integration of its surroundings. The use of deep overhangs to mitigate the glare from the south elevation was important to us. The use of a dark fascia roofing and window system also allows for the elements to blend into the landscape more than if we had chosen a more reflective or lighter material. I believe staff had mentioned most of these, so I'm going to just quickly go through this slide. In this slide, you can see the proposed massing in white lines. And it's a little bit of that white ghosting. The existing massing is depicted in red with the dotted lines. The view angles were studied from the surrounding locations and we wanted to enable the protection of the primary views as much as possible. As we mentioned, the proposed massing is very similar in size and location to the existing. That slide where we have the section, I think it notes it very well, where we were contrasting both existing to the proposed. It was very important to protect the privacy of the neighbors. In this slide, we can see the west facade that faces the neighbors on seventy seven Belvedere Avenue. The existing facade is solid for the most part. That, that's how it is currently, and we made a very big effort to ensure that the proposed design and floor plan allowed to keep this privacy. By layering the landscape outside of the recessed louvered windows and also the blank walls in front of it, we minimize the viewing and the building itself to provide secondary means of protection and privacy with all of this landscape layering. This slide shows various photos that have been taken from Belvedere Way. The existing density is to be preserved and so we can enable screening, privacy and visual protection to and from the property. This following slide is, those, those are additional views that were taken basically today. Showing the density and screening. So as we could see, there was, there was really no opportunity to see the story poles. If there is, there's probably just like a little tiny, tiny speck of red showing through. And the two slides we just kept are for landscape plan and the plant palette. We wanted to just highlight in this slide that we are keeping the existing acacia hedge. And we are planting three new trees for adequate screening from the garage ADU structure towards the southern neighbors at the corner of the property. I believe Tori is here. I believe just from memory, it's two pistachios and one evergreen oak in these three little green highlighted. I think you can see my mouse. And with this, I just want to thank you for your time and consideration of this project.
Thank you, Janai.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from members of the commission? Alex, feel free to pipe in if you have any questions.
Thanks. No questions.
Okay, I have a few questions. So did you, when you were exploring this design, did you? Was there, was there ever a scenario where you didn't? Did you explore lowering the height of the garage roof? Right, right now it's I think at nine feet from grade. I'm just curious about the possibility of lowering it a foot or more.
Actually, we've, we've explored that quite a bit. As, as the, the town mentioned, we're in a very steep slope, which is driving what that variance is in that position. And it's also being driven by the ADU with the garage, right? We have storage under that carport right now, probably a level and a half. And in the future, we're trying to just build out two levels of an ADU. And the height of the garage, right now we cannot get a many SUVs into our own carport. So, and in the future, so we've just planned the height of the garage is basically based on where the structural engineering is to get a garage door to open because it's currently a carport. So we would gladly look at the height of the garage again, from an engineering perspective. We're not attached to that, that moment. It's just exactly how it built from the ground up and to, and to, you know, clearance for garage door.
Just thinking about minimizing the impact of that structure from the street and lowering the overall height.
When you, so those pictures, particularly of the yellow acacia, you can't see that garage from Belvedere Avenue. You can't see a single story pole. So there, and, and you can't even see much of it from above us. So it's, it's those sightlines. While when you're walking by, you see a garage, right? You saw that view walking by Belvedere Avenue. But you can't see it on Belvedere Way or really from above. So that's, so it, and it doesn't, even if we were to shave the six inches off or something, if we could study that and get the garage door to clear, it doesn't change that steep variance.
Yeah, no, I understand. That makes sense. That, that back corner still would need a variance, even if you brought it down 12 inches, it would still be in excess.
We're dealing with that seven, seven percent slope.
From the street facade, there is room to pull it down a little bit.
If the engineering allows, like if we can get six more inches out of there, we would look at that. We just want that to be a structural engineering choice. You know, matching what we did on the house and making sure we can get clearance with SUVs, et cetera, which we cannot often today, even in that carport.
This is a question, you may not know the answer, but is there a minimum height that a garage would need?
I don't know the answer. That the architect might.
Okay.
Janai, you did some math, right, on the height with the garage door, motor, et cetera?
We have a section. Yeah, if I can share, let me just go back to sharing my screen. Okay, and then just bear with me, I have to find that. Why can't I? Let me escape out. I'm sorry, I'm frozen out of my own presentation. One second. I'm going to stop my, my.
Yeah, come back in and out. Actually, we'll go to that picture and discuss that if you had another question.
I have a question written connected to that, which is just the, the thickness of the, the piece that hangs out over it, if that could be made thinner.
I feel like also the rendering doesn't necessarily do it justice yet because that, that rendering makes it kind of look like, oh, that's really thick. Aesthetically, we and our architects are more all for as thin as we can go. Because that's a cantilevered garage, meaning it has to support the steel across that so that we can leave that carport open. Originally, we didn't have a cantilevered, so we had more poles holding it up, which was less, less of the view. We like, we like looking through it. So it's, it's really how that weight supports itself. And if it can get smaller than what that picture is illustratively showing, we're all for it. We just want to make sure that that same thing maps to the house.
Yeah.
So we were, we're being, we're letting structural engineering direct that, but finish fine.
Okay. I'm just curious about the rationale for going through the process of design review for an ADU and why you're requesting a conditional use permanent design review as opposed to following the standard and getting ministerial approval? Because you're in excess of the thousand square feet, which is why it's before us tonight.
I guess when we went through the conversations with the town and how we'd already had the plans before and the plans are really great for actually somebody living and using that space, that's our intention for that space to be used. I, I think we just stuck with the plans that we had because they'd already been approved. And because there was such a need for ADU and JDUs, that was sort of the council that we've had. We almost, we really haven't even touched that part of the property that much, other than to double check, you know, things as, as, as things have moved around. So we really kind of left it as that prior approval.
And I, I can speak to this a little bit more as well. We were very careful in going back and forth with staff. We met with Sammy and we also met with Rebecca at the very beginning of this process because we were again bringing forth a submittal that was approved in 2018. And so within those conversations, the, the client's deep desire to have the most adequate ADU and with the, with the constraints that we had on, on design based on that area where it was, it's very pinched. That's where the triangle really encroaches into the, into the site itself. And there's that seventy percent slope. So with all of those factors, we did a lot of back and forth and we decided to keep the design with those added square footage, knowing, which was about, again, I don't have the numbers in front of you, but like you had mentioned, a little over a hundred additional square feet. And so it was very important to us to have an ADU that was very usable and, and had good areas. Because this is one of the biggest things for our clients. I don't know if that clarifies a little bit. So we were very, we, we knew that we, we would have to come to this hearing and propose this instead of just going through the, the standard ADU procedure.
Thank you.
Ask a question about the tree, the Cypress tree. I'm curious if there's any appetite to save it if it was possible. And if the arborist had indicated, was it the demo that was going to be the like, most likely problem or if it was the whole context of, of the project?
The tree is sort of grown in a kind of gnarly way into the street and the downward sleeping slope. That's okay. We still ask this question as well. I think they're gonna, you would want to whack off more, branches have already fallen off on one side. And then you're going to shave off more branches if you want to protect the oak, right? So the problem is it's encroaching on the oak. So once you've done this weird shaving mechanism and then you put it through this construction, construction process and it's really a dried out tree, we've already removed one off of our property. The city asked us to remove the pine off of our property that had already dried out. And so we didn't want to be in that situation where someone knocked on our door and asked us to remove a tree at an impromptu moment when we could just be proactive based on where it was in its life cycle. We, we regret removing any tree. Like we've, we've tried to avoid it. Like we have two oaks in the back that have, you know, dropped dead because of them being swamped by water and that encouraged our water capture.
The one thing I didn't realize while I was on site was that it is the new ADU and garage is moving over a little bit. So it feels like you, it looks like it was maximized for the, the, the corner condition to put the building in that corner. And so the relationship to the tree is, is like, you put it over as far as you can and then the tree is still there.
We, we asked, we did. And, and, and the, the ADU is, is at the steepest point so that you kind of have the most space to build the ADO. So that's sort of adjusting, you know, that's the positioning of the ADO. And I mean, it would save us money not to take that tree out and replace it. So that was in all fairness, we, that was the other avenue because we have no issue with that tree. But I think it's, I'm not sure. I'm not sure which way it'll fall. So that's the problem. And it drops, it's dropped already like road blocking branches on one side. So the next side is leaning our, our way down the hill.
I have just a follow up question on the tree. So the arborist report that you have, did that get sent to the city?
We didn't do an official report. Again, because it was approved in 2018, it was our inquiry to say, let's revisit this ourselves, right? So that was our own desire to say like, what are our other options here? So there was not an official report, but we took what they said to heart and.
Okay, Rebecca, do we have a city arborist report on this street?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Would, would we need one that? That definitively says this tree is failing, declining a danger in order to remove it?
No, we, the planning commission has approved healthy trees for, for removal.
I'm slightly curious about
Yeah, go ahead.
Context of the, the tree and the site. The tree is pretty nestled underneath the site, or excuse me, underneath the street. Is there any context in Belvedere for trees that were similar, that were removed to considerable shoring to make sure the road was stable? Any site conditions that relate to the removal of this tree? That's both on city property and private property?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. In terms of requirements that the city had, we certainly would have the building department and engineering review the, the removal of it or the, yeah.
If we approved it here, there would be provision for the building department to ensure whatever was done to that area maintains safe conditions for both the property and the site from a safety standpoint.
Yes, we would. And I think we have had some road damage from a tree removal now that we're talking about it. And the city was very involved and made sure that it was fixed and safe.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll put the tree on pause for a minute. So you have a few different, two different skylights. Could you just clarify the size of the skylights and the, the glass, the material?
Sure. Our, our skylights, we have the two skylights that are going in in the same place that we have two skylights now today. So we have existing skylights today too. We'll have two skylights in the future. I think today they're more rectangle and in the future they're more square. So right now they're, they're a little bit larger. We may reduce them in size ourselves. We're not going any larger, we, we will only go smaller. And they're going to be flat and not circular. So they'll have less circular, they'll have less reflective surface. But even more importantly, we, they're blocked by trees. They have tree coverage over them. Our, all of our existing neighbors that heard we had skylights actually had no idea that we had skylights today. I'm glad they asked because they could confirm like, oh, we don't see your lights today. That would be our goal tomorrow. So we, we like dark skies and while we like that natural light, our, our, our goal is to stay muted, if you will.
Great, thank you. They do look very large and I understand you are kind of nestled into the
Yeah.
You can't see a lot, but might be something you'd want to.
Shave.
Yeah.
I think from a cost perspective, I think we're going to end there with you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there other questions for the applicant?
So I guess maybe just one, if the Cypress were removed, potentially, could you create a platform or could you, could the trash receptacle be moved back somewhat into that space? I know it's a steep drop off, but.
It is, it is, it is a steep drop off. I'm not sure if it would have to be built up, which is always possible that, and I'm glad you mentioned that. That trash receptacle was the one point of conversation when we got approved in 2018 and that's where they requested we put it then. So we weren't attached with that space. It was on the other side back in 2018.
Other side of the garage?
It was on the other side of the garage. There's other problems with that and they wanted us, I think it was the encroachment license on how we did that. So by all means, we can look at if that tree wasn't there and we didn't plant an oak right there, but we planted it on the other side of the trash enclosure. Yes, we have the flexibility because we don't have any intention of losing that parking space either. I think that's a, a good parking space. So we can, I think that is a shift that we would gladly look at. And it is steep, but I think.
It is very steep. I think it would end up being a floating trash enclosure. And the, you know, the people would have to get to it. I don't know that that would be visually appealing to passersby. But we, we can certainly have a look and, and see where it would stand in relation to the, to the slope if it had to be on, on our property instead of in the encroachment area.
And Patrick, I'll allow that if I went back to the site and I looked at that, it might look like a terrible idea. So thanks for indulging the thought exercise in it.
We've heard very, yeah. We, we've heard various suggestions and we would make the same if we hadn't been living there for 12 years. No, no issue.
Was there any possibility of it being on the opposite side of the, the carport garage?
We had that there and the city directly requested us to move it last time because of the way, however, the street worked on that side. That was where we originally had it in the design, just as, for clarity. And I, I don't remember, I don't know how the encroachment permit works. I'm sure we can look at that again because that's not, that's not our breaking point by any means at all. Like just the, it's the size of the three trashcans and we wanted some more thoughtful. And if looking at it on the other side is helpful, I think we can do that. I don't remember why we were asked to move it, but.
I think it was because the approach as a pedestrian towards the house from that side, you would have the trash enclosure instead of the open view through the carport. Whereas if it's on the other side, it's kind of in between the garage and the house where there's, you know, not a view anyway because of the trees. That, that's my memory, but it might be incorrect.
It looks like the slope is slightly less over there. So just in terms of situating itself well with the site, it, it seems like it might be a good solution.
We would love to revisit looking at that because that was where it was originally placed. If that's, you know, I don't know what's proven. I think that's a good ask for us to look at that. And that might solve the parking place thing as well.
So back to the ADU. Is, is now a good time to just ask the question about the deed restriction? Okay. So we, we have very aggressive housing goals that we have to accomplish. And as you know, ADUs are a really important part of the strategy to getting us there. And so we really appreciate projects that come to us with ADUs. And I think this is a great feature of your project that you're doing this. We, moving forward for applicants who are requesting ADUs beyond the 1,000 square feet, we'll be offering that in exchange for, in exchange for additional square footage, we'll be deed restricting those units to low income and moderate income. No, low income, Rebecca, thank you, low income. Now, we can't require you to do that in this instance, but it's a question we wanted to pose to you, just if you would consider deed restricting this unit at a moderate or low income level to help us achieve.
Okay. I, I actually appreciate the comment. I think that the deed restriction process from a homeowner's perspective probably needs to complete the cycle of, I understand what the city would be trying to do, but they're also not, it's not reciprocal, they're not capping the property taxes. We're going to incur additional property taxes, we'll never make back the building expense. So we, we are definitely not building an, an ADU as a financial investment because it won't pay itself back in that regard. We will be investing it back into the community to take an additional deed, to take something that legally requires us that we're not required to do into our, into that structure. I don't think would be sound for us because we need to sell the house or anything like that. We'd be stuck with that scenario. So I think we can still both achieve our goals, is getting ADUs into this community and getting them utilized for this community. But I don't think we're in a position to pilot that deed restriction without the other, like, like I said, reciprocal tax benefit of, you know, not, not having your property taxed. There's no property tax lowering for that property space, right? So it's, it doesn't quite pencil out by any means, but I, I see where, I see the thought process.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
No, okay. Thank you. Okay, so are there any questions or comments from members of the public or anyone on Zoom with their hand raised?
I have one person on Zoom with their hand raised. Justin, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Yes, hi commissioners, my name is Justin Wickett and I live at 18 Eucalyptus Road directly above 81 Belvedere Avenue with my wife and daughter. I, I just want to draw your attention to Belvedere Municipal Code 1984010 that limits granting of variances only to the projects that satisfy strict criteria. And in 81 Belvedere's proposal, they do not conform to these criteria. Specifically, item C states that the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the property of owners of other premises or to the quiet enjoyment of their premises. And we want to go on record just stating that granting of this variance is injurious to our property at 18 Eucalyptus Road directly above 81 Belvedere Avenue. It materially decreases the value of our property by replacing part of our view of Richardson Bay that we enjoy from our dining room table each morning, each afternoon with a manmade structure. It's detrimental to our ability to quietly enjoy our premises as a result of the additional downlights that are being proposed in the garage's exterior. I also want to draw your attention to another aspect of Belvedere Municipal Code that constitutes with special privileges consistent with other nearby properties was brought up that 441 and 442 Belvedere Avenue have these variances granted to them, but they're not in the vicinity. They're over half a mile away from this property. And our home is literally steps away, we're a stone throw away. The majority of our homes in, in our vicinity don't have garages that, that are over 28 feet in height. And, and then lastly, I want to leave you with, really, there's no special circumstances that require the granting of this variance. We believe that our neighbors can find ways of achieving their goals by reducing the overall height of their garage structure in various ways. We leave it to them to work with the planning commission to, to figure out a suitable design. We look forward to, to supporting them in their design. And so my ask is that you, you vote to deny the variance. The city is not obligated to grant them this variance and doing so would be taken away from, from us. I also wanted to just say that we support the removal of the Cypress. And per this discussion, we would not want the trash moved to the carport because that's literally what we're now going to be looking at from our dining room table. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come up to the mic, please.
Yeah, thank you so much commissioners. As I mentioned, I'm the wife of Justin Wickett. I live at 18 Eucalyptus. And I just want to underscore some points my husband made. I really do believe that the construction is injurious to us. While in the photograph, it might seem like it's not our primary view. It's very much is our primary view, how we enjoy the water and the views. Our lovely neighbor Elizabeth here and our other neighbor, we see parts of their home from our house and our deck. And it's really the direction we're looking out on. And to have that home above the variance, that's not the entire story we're hearing. There are also going to be solar panels. And in my understanding of that, it will be even a taller roof and obstructed. When we met with the owners and we discussed, we asked point blank, will this design, will the skylights be bigger? Twice, they said no. And upon investigation, it does look like it's bigger. So we did not put that in our letter, but we believe that would be injurious just as, as well as we enjoy quiet nights out there. I want my neighbors to have absolutely their dream home. I'm happy that they looked into the environment and the ADU of challenges of this area with, with inequitable housing. I just want to raise that if they had half considered and done that discussion with their neighbors as equivalent to their concern of environment, i.e. talking about their plans beforehand with us, before this point, we would be up here writing a very different letter in support. So in some, them building within the variance would be a game changer for our comfort. Just having that roof a few feet below would really solve. And we're happy to provide more information. Let me just check on my notes to see if there's anything I missed. It's not our place to really provide design feedback, but I do believe there are many things they could consider to lower that roof height and even call into question if a roof is needed for their carport. Thank you so much. And again, we want to partner with you to, to design your, your dream home.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Yes, please.
Hello, I am Elizabeth Mitchell and I am 20 Eucalyptus. And I had a couple emails back and forth with the fitters, but I didn't have my questions addressed. The skylights are a problem. I did some math and the existing are, one is 16 square feet, the other one is 48 and the proposed is 10 feet larger, 26 square feet. And the other one is 80 and three quarter square feet bigger. That's quite a big change. And I also would love to see where they are. I can't really, on the drawings, they don't really show the existing skylights. And obviously it matters if it's over a, you know, public stair, stairway where, you know, public space, I'm at a stairway where lights are going to be on, you know, versus a bedroom or a bathroom. So I would love to have more information on that. And I also think that the garage could be smaller. Its average garage height is eight feet. And this one, I think, is 12 and a half from the street. And I know there's a slope up in the driveway, but it seems like it could be reduced.
That's it. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. You look like you want to respond or can we, well, you. You can, but.
It's up to.
Okay, if you would like to, you can, but you don't have to, not required.
It looks like a 10 foot six floor to top of roof for the garage. Is that right?
Very, it's very hard to hear the person who's talking at the moment. I heard.
Apologies, no, sorry, I didn't have the mic on. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Just to clarify, the garage top of floor to top of roof above is 10 foot six. Is that correct?
So basically the, the ceiling height, so the, the space, the door, the door that we're proposing is eight foot in height. The ceiling height inside the garage that we're proposing is nine feet. And then with our very preliminary, we have been collaborating with the structural engineer in order to try to find a feasible roof assembly to do that cantilever. So the preliminary member sizes are roughly 12 inches. So if we do the math, when we need, you know, we need a quarter inch per foot to travel for our, for the water and going into the drains, et cetera. That's why we were roughly saying that, that, that roof assembly is somewhere in the vicinity of 17 to 18 inches. If that clarifies to your question. So that, that's where the math is for the, for the, you know, we need a foot for the mechanism to open and close the garage. So that's where, that's where the math goes for a, a door that is eight foot in height. And then the ceiling height is nine and plus the assembly that we spoke about.
Thank you for clarifying. Was there any studies to see whether you, would you need a variance at eight foot? Or would you still need a variance at eight foot?
We would. We would low need a variance. The variance is for, I'm sorry, I don't have the in front of me, but it's approximately one foot 10. Staff can correct me on that. That's how much variance we're, that's the height delta to not need a variance.
And that's with, let's say roughly 17 inch ceiling roof assembly?
That was, that is correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, please.
So amazing question for the applicant, the architect. So getting back to what was just musing, I said first, what did, how much of the garage would you have to take off the back until no variants were needed?
Think we'd have, I don't know if we have that information readily available. I do want to point out that the new garage is if I look at the old as-is drawings and what we have now is in the same footprint from the depth perspective. So I don't think shaving off, you know, a few inches is going to help. And it's, the slope is still very steep. So I don't know if you can look it up in the cat drawings.
And Sammy, you showed the one photo with the circled area.
I just did some math. If it's 86 feet of that garage area that needs, that's in the variance
Right.
section, the width of that garage is 27. So it's about three feet in depth, I think, because three times 27 is 86.
So that would bring it down to 19 or 18 something, which is tight.
And it would further affect our ADU square footage as well because the area is directly below it. So that was also into consideration with the variance.
But conceivably, you could just adjust the roof if at that back section, it looks like it's, I wonder how much of that is floor area? I can see the dash line in the floor site plan on A1.2 is the inside face of wall. Is that true?
Yes.
So if you were to cut off.
That's not, sorry, that's the delta. Am I muted? I'm sorry. No, right?
We can hear you.
Sorry. No, that's the, that's the overhang. So we would, you know, the thickness of wall would be a little bit below, inside of that dotted line.
Okay. So conceivably, to conform with the code and not need the variance, you would need that section to drop down one foot 10 inches roughly.
Correct.
And that would limit the use outside of these, or limit the use of that section, which is roughly maybe a foot by 20 feet? Is that?
It's 27 feet by that longest part where the two arrows are, is about three, 3.18. So I don't know what the, how big the roof overhang is, right? Because that's included in the variance area.
Right. That's a, that's a very minimal overhang. I believe it's six to eight inches from memory. Like it's a very minimal.
Yeah, I think the dotted line is the wall.
Yeah.
Right? And the solid line is the roof or the eaves.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. And so the delta is, it's a very minimal overhang.
And so it's only the, the height restriction that is requesting the variance for that aspect. There's no floor area requirement for that area of the garage and obviously not the ADU or the junior ADU below.
The variance is for the height for the garage. It's also for that little peak of a corner at the carport.
Carport, yes.
The carport honestly seems like the more difficult circumstance to deal with if we were to request a change because it's, to have an integrated structure that's cantilevered that way, it'd almost be curious about like allowing that if there was some compensation for the, the adjustment to the roof of the main garage. I'm curious if there was a study of that or in terms of the, the design requirements, was there, could you terrace that section of the roof and still maintain the integrity of the design?
I'm not sure if, or are we suggesting to have a step in the garage roof?
Yeah, a step would be probably the easiest way to approach it.
That takes away usage. I mean, I
You mean like the carport goes down?
Yeah, if there's, it would be, your roof would drop down before it meets the area where you've required variance. So that you would not need the variance to.
You could angle it down, right? So you'd have a flat roof and then angled down where the variance is. Step it down. Thank you.
Wouldn't be cantilevered then, right?
I'm talking about the garage, not the carport.
Garage, right. Okay.
Yeah. Well, we, we have the windows there for the garage. That's going to be a very ugly garage.
And I'm not sure, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think aesthetically it would be challenging. We would have to study it, but aesthetically, it would be quite challenging to. You know, it's just not a very visible structure.
Yeah.
Coming from the perspective of the neighbors, they seem quite, quite perturbed at the possibility of seeing anything. I think one way to potentially navigate that would be to adjust the height of that section. So there's zero question whatsoever. In my mind, a drop of one foot over the section in that back edge feels like it might be a reasonable thing to consider. And I can also understand the value of the integrity of the design as is.
I don't know if that's a precedent. I don't think somebody not seeing any other house is a precedent that could be said in Belvedere. But what we did discuss with our neighbors is that I truly understand if you were to see a red flag at all in your view right now, that's disturbing. In the future, our house and our roof is the color of charcoal. We'll have natural stones on it. So the little corner that they might see will just blur into the trees and the environment. And we also discussed, and we heard them on this, that we didn't need to put solar panels in that corner. We do, we will have solar panels on our roof. And our roof is also designed for rainwater dispersion. So we can capture rainwater. But we didn't, we don't need to put solar panels in that one corner in case there's any reflective value. I think it will truly just disappear once you get into like those, the dark brown and the stones that into the background. And it's not visible from Belvedere Way. When we took those pictures, you just can't even see it from Belvedere Way. And the neighbor actually right behind us, because they're at an angle, can't see it and hasn't complained. So it is a I realize it's a discussion point.
Thank you.
Okay, I realize I still have public comment open. So assuming no hands raised on Zoom.
Correct.
Okay, so thank you. I will close public comment. So I would like to bring him back to the commission for discussion. Alex, if you're there, would you please start us off tonight?
Okay, I'm still here with the living. So a few things came up tonight, but let me make a general comment first. I think the design of the new house is attractive. For some reason, it almost has an oriental or sort of Asian influence to it. I don't know why I say that because it's just something about the lines, but I find that attractive. I also like the landscape plan. I think that the palette of trees that have been selected is going to be very attractive. And so I guess that kind of brings me around to the large tree. I think it's a cedar next to the garage. And I might go out on a limb here. I mean, you know, we all love trees. This is a very large tree. It, it has had a history of having some break, breaking winds and so forth. I feel like I can understand why the plan proposes to remove it. It's somewhat of an impediment in construction. But it's also, and this is where I go out on a limb, I think, you know, there's, there's multiple ideas, but I think managing the vegetation on the properties in general is important. Some of these trees get so big, they're not going to, you know, last indefinitely. So I, in a way, defer to the client and their arborist. If it's drying out, you know, although we're not a high fire hazard area, that's still a consideration that I think we can take into account. So that's kind of where I land on the tree. I leave it in this case to the owner's decision-making process. One area of sensitivity that I have, and depending on how this goes tonight, I might propose that we condition the approval, if it goes there on the reduction of the skylights. The skylights seem big. I think that's something they could work on with staff and the chair of the planning commission. But I, I recognize that as a concern. Then on, on the height of the garage, I actually, I know when I visited the site, I recognized that I think that would be a point of discussion. And I gave it considerable thought and I reviewed the drawings. It will have a presence on the street. I'm going to acknowledge that. And I looked at the drawings in terms of what are the implications of trying to lower it a little bit? And I, having looked at some projects similar to this with ADUs under garages recently, I'm kind of sensitive to the way the applicant and architect have set up the heights. I think the positioning of the ADU underneath the garage, first of all, let's just say, we like the ADU. We like the JADU. They're good for our housing element. I think we should encourage people to do this kind of design. The floor to floor heights are reasonable. They're not overly generous. They're not too constrained. They all kind of make sense to me. So I guess where I'm going on that is, I think that on balance with getting, you know, three units where we formerly had one, I think that the proposal as designed is quite reasonable and I would be able to make the findings in favor of it. Before I finish my remarks, I acknowledge there might be some visibility to the uphill neighbor. However, I think it's what I would characterize as a minor kind of encroachment into what their current view is. They have a very extensive view of the bay. I, I agree they'll be able to see the roof of the garage. I don't know that lowering at a foot is going to make much of a difference. So I think those are the points that I wanted to make. I can turn it back to you, Ashley.
Great. Thank you so much. Don.
Yeah, and thank you. And in some ways, I'd like to align myself with a lot of things that Commissioner Seidel brought up. Starting with the tree, I guess at that end, you know, it's a normally I, the Lorax and try to speak for the trees, but in this case, that tree is struggling. I don't think you need an arborist to tell you that. We've got one like that ourselves and it's really very much of a jump ball, whether it's something you want to nurse along or just go ahead and bite the bullet and replace it. You know, clearly the, the property is well wooded. And, you know, both from the downside and the upside, you know, at least for the, the main dwelling unit, it's really kind of hard to know it's there, even if you're looking for it. I went back, a little back and forth on the, the carport and the necessity of it and the cantilever. Ultimately, I came down on the side is that the design very much works for me. So at the end of the day, I'm not really suggesting that you step down the garage or somehow shrinking the carport, at least to my mind. At the end of the day, I think the design is excellent and I would not encroach on the aesthetics for the sake of a few inches here and there. That's just me. Really appreciate the rainwater capture and the sensitivities put forward there. Really like all the oaks that you are keeping and the trees that you are adding. I guess the, the trash enclosure is T B D. I mean, it is part of the revocable license, right? So we're, in a sense, we're not really opining on that tonight. Is that, okay.
You could condition it, the trash enclosure is reviewed by the planning commission chair and planning staff to determine if a different location is more appropriate.
I guess that would be my, I guess that would be my one condition. I realize that it's going to be probably unlovely, no matter where it goes. But, you know, maybe that's something that, just with a set of eyes and maybe with the, assuming the, the tree leaves, whether there be room to do something there. So with that, I'll be able to make the findings. I think it's a nice project.
Thank you. Justin.
I want to thank the applicant for a great proposal and for a great project that seems to respect the, the site and a difficult one at that. Having been to the site and seen the context, I do feel like I, I understand why a lot of the design decisions were made. And I would say I agree with my fellow commissioners and would like to add just a condition of getting an arborist report to the planning approval. It would be good just to know exactly what the conditions are before proceeding, but I think you have a fantastic property design and I'm really looking forward to seeing it come to life.
Thank you. Okay. So I visited the site and I've gone over the plans and this is an older home that really needs some improvements. And I think that the plan you have put forth is, is good. And I think generally speaking, it's in keeping with our design review standards, but there are a few areas where I think this project can be improved to conform even better to our code. So in terms of minimizing bulk and mass, I think following the footprint of the original home makes a lot of sense. And I appreciate how the structures have been stacked and situated to reduce the footprint. I, after hearing the discussion tonight and hearing from neighbors and I would like to see a reduction in the garage height from the street, I think, bringing it down a foot. I understand it won't remove the need for a variance for that back corner, but I think it would go a long way to improving the street facing view. It's very large. It's a very large structure. It's very imposing. It's very much on the street. So I do think there's room to bring it down a little bit without sacrificing too much space in that garage. I think the materials and colors are very tasteful and appropriate. I also echo Don's sentiments. I really appreciate that you've taken a very sort of environmentally forward approach with your rain system and solar panels. So in terms of preserving existing site conditions, I, I cannot support the removal of the probably 100 year old probably 100 year old cypress tree. I would like to see a definitive arborist report before making a decision. Um, I think we also need to clarify where that tree sits, if it's on private property, if it's in the city property. So pending an arborist report, I would like to see that tree protected and saved and everything done that we can do to protect it during construction, barring anything major and glaring in terms of safety. But I think it's just um, too special and majestic and beautiful. And it really just makes a huge impression on you walking by and it's, I would say, a very much a focal point of your of your property. So in terms of the rest of the landscaping, um, I think that some minor tweaks will make this even stronger. I think that the the landscaping along the north side of the property line it needs a little bit more. I think you've got pitus form going in there, but I think adding hedges um, as a backdrop will help a lot because you're looking. Um, I know you don't have windows on that side, but if you're outside, you're essentially looking into your neighbor's um, pool area and vice versa. So I think a little more planting on that side um, would be great. There's a section that's sort of bare around the carport structure. It's like the metal um, structure it's sitting on and I think um, planting some trees in that corner just to kind of cover that metal structure would also really help a lot just to screen and I think it will just really improve the look of it. So in terms of lighting, I mentioned this when I was there, but generally speaking, the I think the lighting plan, exterior lighting plan needs a fairly significant reduction. We're just, we're very conscious of unnecessary light pollution and um, we aim to keep exterior lighting at just enough for for safety reasons. So I would, the lighting will come back for a review before you get a building permit, but I would aim for like a 50% reduction in the lighting um, outside. I think that you have to remove the lighting and the carport altogether. Um, that's just gonna light up the structure and you can have lighting down at the foot level, which will be enough for safety and getting any, getting in and out of a car, but won't create like a, you know, nuisance for neighbors or people walking by. And then we don't allow en railing lights either, so those would have to come out. Okay, so in terms of windows, it's a very beautiful, modern design. Um, the entire western facade of the home is glass and I think that this is just gonna project substantial amounts of light. This is a question, I think, back to you is something to think about. Um, could you reduce the amount of glazing on that side by 20%? I think I understand the appeal of a, of having a glass wall when you have a view like that. But practically speaking, I would think you want some interior walls to frame those views and have some visual relief and hang artwork and things like that. I I just have concerns about between the outside lights, the interior lights, all these sort of glass boxes stacked on front, on top of each other, that it's, you're gonna have a ton of light pouring out. And we do consider um, views from the water. So um, I would really look at the, at the at the amount of glazing on that side and see if there are any places where it could be reduced a little bit. So in in terms of the um, the neighbors and the the request for the variance. So I think I'm I'm generally in agreement. I can make the findings uh, for the variance. I did visit um, 18 Uglyptus and I am very sympathetic um, to the neighbors, but I really don't think that it constitutes um, a significant portion of their primary view. And in fact, a portion of the carport will be covering what is now a view into um, somebody's dock on West Shore. So it it's a very kind of tiny, miniscule portion of the view. So um, I understand the change is hard and I am sympathetic, but um, I I can support um, the findings for the variance. So if I can have support, oh, the other, sorry, one more, one more comment. I also am in agreement on the the skylights. I think those need to be significantly reduced in size. So I would be able to support the project with um, a few of the conditions I've mentioned. Um, so I would like to see a tree protection plan um, put in place for the cypress and then also an official um, city arborist report to come back to us so we can really understand what's going on with the tree before we make any decision about removing it. I would like to see a reduction in the ceiling height of the garage to eight feet. As I already mentioned, the exterior lighting needs to be looked at, but that will come back to planning. Um, so that can be worked on um, as well as the landscaping. So um, but I would like to condition or prove on um, adding those additional hedges and trees around the uh, the metal structure. And just to clarify, we can, as condition of approval, ask for the trash enclosure to be moved possibly, if there's another location for it. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I would also support that condition. So if I have support on these conditions, let me know if you disagree, but um, I can support this project.
Let me just summarize what I've heard from some of the commissioners. So uh, the review location, the trash enclosure with Planning Commission Chair and Staff to determine whether a different location is more appropriate. Condition of approval that we receive an arborist report. A reduction of the skylights. I think if I'm reading the room rate, I have the majority of the commissioners on those. And then these are the ones that the only one commissioner has commented on. Reduction in the garage height by one foot. Not to remove the cedar tree. The north side landscaping needs more plantings. There's a a portion of a the carport that's a metal structure that needs more landscaping. The lighting needs to be reduced by 50%. The window glazing needs to be reduced. And a tree protection plan should the tree stay. So I guess we, the commissioners need to determine.
Can I ask a question about the tree? So if the arborist report, so that that item would come back to planning. Once we have a report on the tree, does it come back for design review or how how does that piece of it work?
Well, it sounds like three commissioners are okay with removal of the tree. So I don't, so then arborist report would just be part of a building permit application.
Right, okay.
That's what I'm hearing, but I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think I'm not sure how to, I don't, what I'm saying, I don't think applies to whether it's a condition of approval, but the purpose of the arborist report being for both the city and the homeowner to understand the best scenario for the tree, because it sounds like they might want to save it if it was potentially feasible. So leaving it, I guess, in their court in terms of the decision to remove or not remove, or is that?
It's, it, the tree removal is up for design review tonight.
So I I think, I don't think there's enough information right now to to say it's okay to take it out. I, that's my position. So I don't know if if others feel differently, um, if they would like to wait for an arborist for arborist report, get more information on the health of the tree before deciding to remove it.
Could we approve the plan as is, which removes the tree, but it not be a requirement? If it's in these, if it's in the plan, do they have to remove the tree?
If you approve the removal of the tree, they're most likely going to remove the tree. Whether or not, I mean, it sounds like they've consulted with an arborist, so we would require an additional arborist report. I don't know what.
I don't think they have. I, the one thing that I just think nobody's actually looked at the tree yet, is that?
We did, we revisited ourselves. We said, what might we do? And that was when our arborist Bartlett said to us, this tree is quite dried out since the prior eight years and that it was also competing with the other oaks. So they were looking at, because we spent a lot of money with, as you guys, with your tree doctors, trimming the oak canopy and all of that. So they were looking at it from how do we not further damage the oaks that it's competing with? And when we look at where it is on its mature lifecycle and what, how it's gonna be affected by construction, they they couldn't say when it was going to no longer, you know, live or thrive, but it already dropped all the branch, quite a few branches on the street side. So it was also concerning to us from an insurance perspective. We had had another tree in our backyard, again, in the pine Cypress family that quickly was getting dry like this and and dried out and sitting knocked on a door and taking two closer, move that tree rapidly for 10K. So if we're gonna be looking at those, and this would be more, so if we're gonna be looking at those types of costs, we were just trying to do it thoughtfully and proactively. We did look, so it's not, I, and I, I understand. We reassessed it even though it was approved last time.
Thank you for clarifying, and I think with that new information, I will uh, remove my requirement for uh, an arborist report as a condition of approval from my approval.
So then it sounds like there's consensus on the trash enclosure condition of approval. And then remove the skylights. So look at the location of the trash enclosure and reduce the skylights to the size they are, or just something that the Planning Commission Chair and Staff can review. I guess that's a question for you guys.
I think that that would be fine to come back to the chair and staff.
Okay. So I suppose somebody can make a motion, right?
There are three in support of removing the tree, so I don't have support on that condition. Okay, I can't make the findings. I can't make them piecemeal, right? I can't support.
No, it sounds like maybe just a motion should be made.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, so can we, can I please get a motion? For 81 Belvedere.
Um, I my unusual state here, I I think I could try to make a motion here. Um, and I don't know if it'll work. And I I don't necessarily think, um, and Rebecca, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think I would be okay with with all the conditions described, including lowering the garage roof by one foot. With the exception of the tree. I'm, I'm still in favor of leaving the tree to the discretion of the owners. So um,
I'm just gonna jump in and just argue for, isn't more information better than less information? I'm not saying it shouldn't come out or doesn't need to come out. I'm just saying we don't have any information in front of us tonight that says definitively this tree is a problem.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's what I'm saying. And I, I don't think it's responsible or or we're even able to make a decision on that until we have that information in front of us. That's what I'm saying. So.
That's, that's fine, Ashley. Then I I withdraw my motion. Um, I understand your position. Um, I just, I don't know if we can approve the project tonight if we feel like that information is missing. That's where I'm getting hung up. So maybe someone else smarter than I can figure out how to make a motion if they want to.
Well, can the motion be to, a- as of right now, because we don't know, can it be to preserve and protect the tree? And then pending an arborist report, if it comes back that the tree needs to be taken out, then it can be taken out through a DRE. It doesn't need to go through planning again. Is that a possibility?
If that's what the commission wants, I don't. It doesn't sound like that's what all of the commission wants. It sounds like what some of the commission wants. I think alternatively, you can approve it with a condition of approval that an arborist report is required to determine the health of the tree.
But determining the health of the tree determines the action that we take. So.
Is there anything else, so just in the context of it being on the lot line? We talked about it early in the.
Yeah, I mean, we don't.
So, yeah, that is because they have a revocable license for the area of where the tree is, it's their responsibility. It's not the city's. They take on the liability and the responsibility of that area. They have the revocable license over, so the city would not be involved. The city tree removal process would not be involved on, in this particular case.
Um, I have a, a, an idea. I just wonder if we should ask the applicant. I mean, one, one way this could go is we could continue the item and they can continue to work on the issues that seem to be open issues. And I know there's like an issue about whether there should be less glass, you know, on the bayside, um, whether they prefer to take a continuance or whether they would prefer to take a motion that you know, potentially means they have to save the tree and and do these other things.
I think that's a good question for the applicant.
Okay, this is new territory for us. So we'll discover with you guys on how how best to um, proceed. The couple of things that I heard continuity on um, your lighting comments, Ashley, we totally intend to follow code with outdoor lighting. So if our carport or something like that needs to change its lights and that's fine, right? So, and I know you guys are gonna review a lighting plan, so I think that was one of the points. Um, but that probably goes back to review. The skylights, looking at those again, I think we ourselves would probably reduce the skylights as well. I don't have an exact number. So that's, that was something that I think we are comfortable with saying. Let's take a look at that. They're in the same place that they are now. They're turned, you know, they were rectangle and now they're square, I believe. But I think that's something that we, we're on the same page with, and they have tree coverage. The tree, I'm torn. Uh, I can understand having another arborist look at the tree or the city's arborist looks at the tree. Does the city also take on the liability of the tree based on the decision? That's what I'm torn about. So we want to do the best thing about the tree. We we've looked at it. We can keep looking at it. Um, I'm more worried about the liability and once a tree dies, you have to remove it very quickly. And if you just paved all of that and just redid your garage floor, um, you know, we had, it's it's a real, that's a challenge, right? So that's, that's, that's the thing we're trying to avoid on the tree. We've removed some quickly from our property, you know, when, when asked, because they were drying out. And I'm sure it was also because they were hitting other people's view. So those, those ones that I think we have, I feel like there was, I I'm not following the, the massiveness of the garage, like we could pull up that garage picture again from the street view. So I'm not following the ma- so anything that requires us to do thousands and thousands of dollars of reengineering is hard for me to say yes to. So I'm, I'm not following the one on the garage or the the glazing. And I didn't hear critical mass for that. So I couldn't sort of have a separation of things that we could sort of make progress on, but I'll pause for a second, because like I said, I'm, we're not an expert at this particular process. So take some guidance.
I think the one thing on the arborist side, I think uh, totally trust in in the arborist diligence. I think it's just missing the arborist report is the one reason that I think it keeps coming, coming up, just as a total footnote, honestly. And as far as the, the desire for seeking a motion to approve or deny versus a continuation, which way did you, do you have a leaning one way or the other?
Um, what is that? Help us understand. So continuation means we come back in February or something?
Essentially take comments from tonight, make revisions to your plan after having heard everyone speak and bring it back. If we vote on it tonight and it's denied, um, then it's um, additional cost to you to resubmit a whole new application.
Do we have to resubmit a whole application or does it go to just city council as a, as like an appeal or something?
Appeal.
If they, if it gets denied, you have the opportunity to appeal it to city council.
Yeah, within like.
If it gets continued, you can take these comments into consideration. You can review them.
Right.
And say we assess the glazing, we assess the reducing at a height, it's going to cost this much in engineering, or it's not going to cost this much in engineering.
Right.
We have the arborist's report, the arborist, or arborist says it's unhealthy.
I'm weighing the like foot on the ADU versus, I'm weighing the foot on the garage, which is the whole ADU project, right? And all of the things that have gone into that. So I'm, I'm willing to appeal some things. Um, but I also just want to be respectful of this process. So I think we have like partial agreement here on the, like, let's reduce some skylights. We're not going to worry, we're not going to have outdoor lights that cause problems. We're just not. We want dark skies as well. Um, trash enclosure, by all means, somebody can take a look at that if there's a better space. We had it on the other side last time, by all means.
Yeah, it sounds like.
The really expensive stuff, I guess, is my honest. And we can get a report for the tree on file if that helps everybody have something to refer to. The reason why we didn't is because it was approved last time. And maybe the city is the one that puts the, I don't know what the right step is. We're not opposed to having a report for the tree so that it's on record. Because I think that everyone having something to reference, I understand that. So that, you know, part of it's just making sure to do the diligence there. Uh, so those things I think are not, uh, we're on board with that. The things that are truly really expensive and redesigning, I'm not, I have a hard time getting on board with that. And I wonder if we can separate those two lanes.
I wonder if there is a way to both separate and combine them. Hear me out.
Okay.
If, if it's a, a condition of approval to study it, and if a, uh, to study the roofline, and if there's a suitable alternative, that that be the chosen path, but if it's not an appropriate design measure for cost or general design, that that be fine. Just something that you need to do is to study it, because the neighbors have brought up some pretty considerable talk, but not a requirement to change.
We're absolutely on board with that, because if we can whack six inches off, that's our goal. We just want it to be driven by structural engineering and what, what the, the garage door clearance is. So we would, we would be doing that, yes, anyways. So I would, we would, we could agree to that.
It, how, how would that work in practice? Who, who is responsible for pulling that data together? And, and I just.
The applicant.
And coming back at like, how, how would that come back to planning?
Could come back to staff and planning commission chair.
Okay.
So it'd be that, and the landscape plan and the lighting plan.
Oh, your landscape plan comment. Honestly, we didn't want to overdo our landscaping until we lived in the house. We intend to add more foliage all over the place. You probably saw some opportunities. We just didn't want to add more until we lived in it for a moment. We've learned that. We've got to live in this place for 12 years, see where your sightlines are. And then see what's thriving and work with that. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not pushing back on your landscaping plan. It's just, we'd want to get there. I think the one that we have does justice to anything we've removed and already adds more than what is, and protects all the sightlines. And I'm very much open for suggestion in the future. I just wouldn't make it conditional, because we want to, we kind of want to see where it lands and then add those things. So that, that's my only call on the landscaping. I've no, no issue with foliage.
Okay.
So I have issue with reengineering, like really big, big reengineering items.
So I've sort of lost count on where we are, but do, would you like us to take a vote then tonight? It sounds like that's the direction you're going based on what you're saying.
I mean, if we're, if, these things are amenable to us, if, right? I think, I, I, I'm guessing, I don't, I, I think, yes. That these suggestions, the lighting plan and the skylights and the, um, the trash enclosure and the, the, having a, a registered report on the health of the tree, right? You know, I think those things are, are amenable and I would want, I, I think I can support that. And then looking, studying the garage, right? Because we're looking for, we already knew we were, if we could reduce it by six inches, just to tell our own neighbor, we took it down by six inches, is something we would aspire to do. It wouldn't get us across the variance line, right, for that, for that. Um, so if we can separate those two and say, study, see what else you can shave off, we're on board. Like, that's just a no brainer for us.
So maybe, can I just? So given the number of conditions that are sort of kind of in play, i- is it not really, are we not really asking for a continuation? I mean, that is.
Well, I, maybe. So skylights, it sounds like everyone's in agreement on. Landscaping and lighting plan has to come back anyways. It's a standard condition of approval. Third condition of approval is what we talked about with the trash enclosure. Fourth.
Sorry, just for diligence on the trash enclosure, what, are we saying we're requiring of the trash enclosure?
We're, we're asking that it be reviewed. Review location of the trash enclosure with planning commission chair and staff to determine whether or not a different location is more appropriate.
Got it.
Something along those lines. It sounds like also an arborist's report is required to be on file.
I would take that a step further before anything is done with the tree.
Okay, that's where I'm not sure I have consensus on.
Well, so, but what's the call? So an arborist's report comes back and says, the tree's, yeah, struggling, but yeah, yeah, get nursed along and prune it. So, and what does that tell us? Uh, really? I mean, it's he can, an arborist isn't going to say, well, take it out, or don't take it out. So I, I'm just.
Sometimes they do.
Yeah, and they'll be able to tell us if it's, um, in danger of failing. High failure risk, which would change the calculus for the, for the decision. So I think it's important to have that before anything is done. That's my perspective on it.
And approving this with that as a condition would mean that the planning staff and the chair has eyes on that report, so we don't need to see it now to approve it. Is that correct?
It would have to come back to the commission.
The tree?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
You could approve everything tonight as conditioned, except for the tree. If that's a route you want to go on. It's a little complicated. You could also continue it. It might be cleaner. They can look at the height of the garage reduction. They can look at the, the, an arborist's report can weigh in, and then you'll have more definitive information on these things that are kind of a little gray still. But I don't know what your thoughts are, what the whole commission's thoughts are on requiring the arborist's report and the tree. It sounded like previously, some of you were okay with it being removed. Maybe your minds have changed, and that's okay. And so, you know, I think it's in your.
Just to clarify my stance on it, it is for me to the discretion of the, the owner, if it's possible. But just that it feels like a necessary piece of documentation to have, especially with the context of, of the city and the project.
The owners, if the owner has an arborist's report, it still requires design review to have it removed or not removed.
So you have to vote yes or no on it?
Yeah.
And it was approved prior, right? It was, it was definitely approved prior. So this is not, um, I understand.
I also want a condition of reducing the glazing in the back on the west side. If, I don't know if I have support for that, but that, that's one of my conditions of approval.
Yeah, I, I, actually, I, where I agree with your design sensibilities there, that is, I think it's just simply a better design. If there's, if it's not just glass wall to wall. It seems to me we, we've mostly made that distinction for lagoon facing homes. And maybe I just haven't seen enough projects that are bay facing yet to to evaluate that. That, I guess I'm saying that that would not be, where, where I might recommend that, I don't think I would make that a condition.
We'll have extensive shading. That's part of the interior plan. But it's very much like all of our neighbors up above us, all along the lines, new construction, you know, you're maximizing that one view, which is why we have almost no windows facing our neighbors on either side, both for their property and just, you know, not surround um, windows, but we have, it's all shaded. So we'll, it'll have all in, it'll be all, um, what's the word? Low reflective glass, just because that's environmentally the conscious thing to do. You know, we've no intention of reflecting out across the bay. You almost can't see our house right now when you're out on the bay and you do that, that Tiburon, um, uh, sunset sore. So we like it that way. That wouldn't be something we could sign up for. I feel like the other things we could take to vote, because we also have a timeline that we're trying to address. Um, but I'm, I'm just trying to be sensitive to the things we can really do, which I think the skylights and the downlights and revisiting that trash closure, enclosure with the town are just reasonable.
Okay, so I just go back to, would you like us to take a vote on it tonight, or would you like to continue it?
So help me understand, if you decide against it, then we can, we appeal to the city, right? Okay. And we would appeal on the basis of basically three, you know, our, our ADUs, et cetera, being the primary benefit to the space, that type of scenario. Understood, because I'm not sure we can address each of the other things in, in individually, but I think we can make some progress on those two or three ones.
Okay, I mean, again, it's up to you. So.
Okay, l- last time, the conditions that you guys approve, that it sounds like there's consensus on. Reduction of the skylights, landscaping, lighting plan, trash enclosure, location. And that's it. As far as, it sounds like there's consensus on that.
And no consensus on windows and tree.
Right, so we don't have consensus on reduction in glazing.
Or the reducing the.
Or reducing the height of the garage, or an arborist's report.
Well, I, I will. I'm okay on the arborist's report, if that's, if that gets us to.
You're okay on requiring an arborist's report.
And then if the tree can come, if the tree needs to come back to us separately.
So then you, so you're saying you wouldn't?
I could, if that were one of the conditions, I would.
So you could support the project except for the removal of the tree? Based on an arborist's report.
Tree without an arborist.
Got it.
Okay, so you want us to vote? Oh, yeah, Alex.
Can I make a, a comment on it? Yeah, um, and this is partly directed at the applicant. If, if there is a, a motion with any number of conditions tonight, I, I will vote in favor. I'll make the findings. Um, but to the applicant, if you have concerns about the tree, the removal of glass or whatever, you know, I will vote for those with my fellow commissioners, but if, if they feel like there's something you rather work on in the interim, I think it would be better to take a continuance and bring more information back to the, to this planning commission to see if you can configure it in a way that would garner more support. So I'm not telling you to do one or the other. I'm just sort of saying, I think that's where the sense of the commission is.
The conditions that Rebecca listed, I think Melissa and I are fine with. It's the conditions that the commission doesn't have consensus on we're not fine with.
And we're fine with getting a, you know, a vote, right, with some conditions, right? That's, that's not a problem for us, those conditions that you've mentioned.
Okay, so let's, let's vote on it then. I think that's the direction we're going. And the, the two that we don't have consensus on will not be part of the conditions.
Excuse me, is there an actual motion on the table?
No.
Okay.
I think, I think we're working on it right now. We're, we're trying to.
We don't talk out of chambers about these things, so we're, we're working on them on the fly too, so bear with us.
So, um, would you like us, we'll take a vote unless you tell me not to?
So everyone knows what we're voting on, and then that way. Because I'm trying, like I said, I'm differentiating between the heavily structural conditions and the ones that I think we all are amenable to, right? That's, that's, that's where we are, understandably. My husband's the same way. It's just, we'd like this project to proceed, and we'd like to do the best by it. So anything that's just heavy, like redoing all of our plans would be incredibly difficult. And we, but these other conditions that we've talked about, the trash enclosure and the skylights, and not having the outdoor lighting, et cetera, those are amenable, and I think we can.
No, I understand, I understand. I think we need to keep this going.
So just for clarification, we're voting on the plans that are in front of you with the four conditions that I've mentioned. No, sorry, three, three, trash enclosure, landscaping, lighting and skylights. You're reviewing the design review for the project, which is inclusive of removal of the tree. You're voting, you're reviewing the conditional use permit for the excess floor area for the ADU. And you're, you have another motion for a variance to exceed the allowable height within the first forty feet of the property.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so.
As conditioned with those three items.
Okay, and can, can we say design review as conditioned? Just as, as conditioned, as dated?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we don't have to repeat them all again.
No, we repeat.
Okay. I feel, I feel like we've repeated them many times.
I wrote them down on five different pages.
Can I please have a motion? I'm sorry, public comment is closed at the moment. For, for clarification, yeah, for clarification. Okay.
You have to reopen the public.
Okay, um, reopen public comment.
So we will be appealing to the town council if there's no condition on reducing the height. I also want to further say, I don't want you to run up more costs. We want this to be collaborative. Coming up to us before the plans would have definitely driven down your cost. And again, all we're asking for is to build within the variance, not to have one or, you know, two feet more than it is. That could be explored perhaps with the cantilever part. That could be what we're seeing from our house. So there's lots of solutions. We'd be more than willing to work offline on a solution. And again, regrets that this hat wasn't done before. All the time, we've actually written, um, letters for our neighbors and support their plans when first they came to us and we didn't agree. So we want to make this happen. We just don't, um, we're very strongly against the, the roof being hired, because it, it would affect, um, our quality of life and is injurious to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to close public comment. Okay, can we bring it back to the commission? I'd like to, um, can someone please do a motion?
So, um, I'm sorry, Rebecca, one more time. So where does the, where does the tree in the arborist's report live in our motioning?
Design review. But we don't, that's not one. I only have three conditions of approval. One, to reduce the size of the skylights.
Right.
Two, to review the landscaping and lighting plan with the planning chair and staff, and to review the location of the trash enclosure.
And, and you're saying that the arborist's report cannot be a condition?
You can add, yes, you can add a condition of approval to require an arborist's report. But is it just to require the arborist's report, or is it before you make a decision on the tree? That's where I'm still not clear on.
I, well, I think that would be the intent, right?
Sorry?
Yeah, I think that would be the intent, is to see the report before we made the call on the tree, right?
Just for whatever it's worth, I, I'm okay with not seeing the arborist's report. I'm just feel like, uh, making sure that the applicant has the data to support their, whatever their decision is.
I would argue that we need the data in order to make a decision on it. That's my position. So it sounds like maybe there's support for that condition to be.
It was a split vote.
Oh, right, so Alex is now, okay, so yeah.
I mean, I'm guessing. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think you're right. So, so it wouldn't be included?
You could approve the design review. I mean, I think you have to get the arborist's report out of your mind. The, the, the tree is wrapped up in the design review. You could approve, make a motion to approve the design review without the approval of the removal of the tree. That's one way to look at it. You could make a motion to approve the design review and require an arborist's report to re, to be submitted to city staff. And if the arbor, well, then it's got to go through design review again. I mean, we can't, we don't remove trees without design review. we don't remove trees without design review. So I think that's where we're getting hung up on, even if the arborist's report comes back.
I am still kind of curious that there, there's no way for them to, if it's been approved to be removed, it's, it's a requirement for them to remove the tree? Is that a true statement?
Well, it's not required, but they can.
We don't have an arborist's report, so either you're approving the removal of the tree or you're not.
I'm okay approving it.
Okay, so we go back to a split vote on that, on the tree.
So, so we can, we can't make the, we can't make a two-part decision on the tree. That is, we, we're either left with saying okay to remove it, but we can't make that removal, we can't make that removal contingent on seeing the arborist's report?
Anne?
That, that doesn't advance the ball, if it means it has to come back to the planning commission.
Right.
But can it come back just as that? Will the whole thing come back?
Just the tree would come back?
Sure, or if the arborist's report says it's dead and dying, then we sometimes exempt trees from design review. We don't require it.
We've proven that we can deal with projects that are just one tree here tonight, so that's not precedent. I, I, I mean, I, I I, I mean, I think you know what we're suggesting here is that, that, you know, obviously we it would be, you know, the, the applicant, it sounds like they would like to go home with something. And, and what is that something? And it sounds like we have four conditions that at least three of the commissioners would be able to sign on to.
So the fourth would be to require an ar, you'd approve, make a motion to approve the design review, which is inclusive of the tree removal. One of those conditions would be that the applicant is required to get an arborist's report. Should that arborist's report state that the tree should come out? I mean, there's just no going. I don't know how we go back, and, and maybe you can help me here, like, what if the arborist's report says no, but you've already approved the design review? So that's where I'm getting stuck.
Well, does the project have to be redesigned if the tree stays? I mean, that's the question.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Then I think you can, you can condition removal of the tree upon a report from the town arborist confirming that the tree is sickly and should be removed. Otherwise, the design review is approved, partially approved with the exception of the tree removal.
Okay.
What she said.
So the three plus what Anne says, said. Three conditions.
Yeah.
And we have it reported. We'll put it in writing tomorrow.
Can I get a motion for?
That'd be motion, that'd be motion one on the design review. I make a motion.
Conditioned.
As conditioned per the four conditions.
Someone needs a second.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Uh, motion two, I move that to grant a demolition permit, demolish the existing structure.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Uh, motion three, to adopt a resolution granting a variance to exceed the twenty-foot height uh, limit, uh, within forty feet of the, uh, street line.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Motion four, grant a use permit allowing the ADU to exceed the thousand-square-foot limit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Okay, so resolutions pass as conditioned? Okay. Congratulations to the applicant. Thank you for bearing with us.
Thank you.
Okay, I now adjourn the meeting.